Tonight is Wednesday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Five o'clock on a Wednesday night. This budget presentation in special meeting of the Enfield Town Council will be aired for everyone. It'll be available on YouTube, I think live right now at www.youtube.com/watch. A whole bunch of stuff, watch TV. The meeting also will be aired tomorrow night, starting on ETV Channel sixteen, the following evening tomorrow night. So again, this will be aired tomorrow night as well. We look forward to showing the budget presentation. We've missed you all. Look forward to, is our first teleconference video meeting, so hopefully it goes well without any kinks. But if there are kinks, we will work them out as we will have meetings like this over the next month or so. Again, welcome everyone. Before we have roll call, if we could have, for anyone, if we could have a brief moment of silence for all those who have been directly indirectly any info of the last month and a half by the COVID nineteen. If we could have, please, just a brief moment of silence before we get the meeting started. Thank you, everyone. May those who have passed away rest in peace. Roll call, please Suzanne.
Counselor Bosco. Am I unmuted? I think I am.
There, you got it, here.
Okay. Counselor Sicola.
Here.
Counselor Hamler.
Here.
Counselor Kiner.
Here.
Mayor Mudley.
Here.
Counselor Mangini.
Here.
Counselor Mueller.
Here.
Counselor Riley.
Here.
Counselors Tarazza.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Suzak. Is here. Counselor Angier.
Here.
Eleven members present, none are absent.
Thank you Suzanne. We will now turn it over to item two on the present, on the special meeting budget presentation. Kasha, I believe, I don't know if Chris will be presenting now, or how that, you're going to bring that up on a video. And if anyone else can go on mute, please, that'd be most appreciated. And I turn it over to Kasha, our Assistant Town Manager, and/or Chris Promson, our Town Manager.
Yes, this is Chris. Now Alex and Paul will present the recorded video presentation that we recorded this morning. Good evening. Welcome to our residents and to the Honorable Mayor and Members of the Enfield Town Council, who are joining us this evening to hear the manager's proposed fiscal budget year 2021. I would first like to start off by thanking Chris Dreszek of the Board of Education and his reassessment of his submission to us on his budget from earlier this year. When Chris Dreszek, the superintendent, submitted the budget at that time, we had not felt the impact, nor did we have any idea that we'd be facing a worldwide pandemic. In recognition of that, his initial request for this year's 2021 fiscal budget for the Board of Ed was a 2.6% increase totaling $1.8 million. We have had discussions with him, collaborations with him, and he has resubmitted for the purposes of this presentation, a new budget for the Board of Education, which represents a 0% increase. There has been a sheer sacrifice by the Board of Education and the town of Enfield in presenting this year's budget to reflect the dire circumstances we find ourselves in today. We have a partnership. We work well with the superintendent and the Board of Ed, and he has posted, or will be posting at the end of this presentation, as we will be on our website, a statement explaining his thinking and his thought process and making that very difficult decision, and we thank him for it. Before I proceed, I would like to thank John Wilcox, our Finance Director, and Kasha Persiello for their hard and diligent work in preparing this year's budget. And with that, we'll proceed. The FY 2020 adopted budget last year was approximately $137 million, and that represents both the town and the Board of Education's spending. The proposed 2021 budget has increased to approximately $138,900,000. The total value change for this year is approximately $1.8 million, or 1.36% increase from last year's budget. You can see the breakdown below on the pie, which is usually about what it has been in the past. Board of Education, 51.6%, and the towns remaining, 48.4%. The increase in this year's 2021 fiscal budget is accounted for by the following increases. Firstly, as I indicated, the Board of Education has come in with a zero flat rate increase. However, much like last year, the state has a minimum budget requirement. And after the state adopts their budget, we know exactly what it is, but we're basing it upon approximately what we returned to the Board last year after the budget process. And this year, we're hoping it will be about the same, around $400,000. The town will experience an increase in debt service this year. This is for roads 2015 and the high school project in the amount of $1.4 million. There comes a time, and I won't get into the specifics because it's complicated, but that when we borrow bonds, there's a time that you renegotiate them, sort of like a refinancing. So it leaves that process and then enters the budget stream for the town, and we have to account for it in our budget process. So that occurred this year, and even though we have very favorable low premiums and interest rates, the increase to this year's budget for the roads 2015 and high school project is approximately $1.4 million. So the total increase is 1.8. How do we pay for this, or how will we pay for this going forward next year? The first portion of the increase will be paid for by the increase in our grant list from 2019. The increase was approximately $733,000. And then we have increased the use of our fund balance by $1.1 million approximately, and that will cover that $1.8 million increase. The increase from the general fund, from the fund balance, was occasioned by favorable increases in revenues from last year's budget, which we are fortunate enough to have this year to use towards this $1.8 million increase. Now, the town also, like the Board of Education, has had to absorb non-discretionary increases in our budget, like your household and others, where you see an increase in insurances and perhaps household oil or gas or things of that nature. The town also has those fixed costs that are non-discretionary, mandatory increases that we have to address. The first being our pension with an increase in our obligation of approximately $577,000. A health insurance increase cost in our premium, which is about 17.5%. Other towns and cities have also experienced that increase. We are self-funded, and despite the fact that this past year, we had a savings per member, it was down 1.7% the cost of members using our healthcare. And despite the fact that the plan cost was down 2.1%, and we've increased wellness visits by 6.3%, due to market variations and increases in the industry, we have to absorb a 17.5% increase despite our good trends in healthcare. The next is contractual, contractual union increases in wages, accounting for about $348,000. And I will note, without getting into great detail, most unions and non-union last year agreed to a 0% cost increase, and that was as a result of the very dire state budget a couple of years back. We also have to pay an increased disposal fees for trash. It is increasing from $73 a ton to $80 a ton. Although this is an increase, it is a very favorable one. Public Works went out to bid, and despite the fact, because of issues in waste recovery and changes in the market, it was anticipated the cost might go up to $120 per ton. So it is a multi-year contract, and in the first year, it would be $80.50 per ton, and it increases a dollar or two over the next two years. This next slide shows the state revenue from the governor's budget. The first, the pilot, which is payment in lieu of taxes. This is on state-owned property in the town, primarily Department of Corrections, properties and facilities. We received $655,000, or we did last year. Pilots for colleges and hospitals, and that really represents for his nuntuck and other nonprofits. Local, that was $17,200. Local capital improvement, or LoCIP, from the state is $323,000. Town aid to roads, $534,000. Grants for municipal projects, $256,000. The Mash and Tucket Pequot and Mohegan Grant, a million two. Our education cost sharing, the base entitlement, which is the largest share to our education, is approximately $29 million. And then for adult education, we receive approximately $103,000. That totals $32,667,674. Now, we left that flat. That was what we received last year. The governor's proposed budget for this year shows an increase of 1.2% from FY 20. But we wanted to be on the conservative side, so we're keeping it flat, given the realities of COVID-19 and what the state may do when they adopt their budget after we've already concluded ours. Well, as part of our budget, we have our standard operating costs, the cost of doing business, providing our services, but also we invest in our infrastructure each year, and that's called the Capital Improvement Program. So the following is highlights from those items that we were able to fund this year that are really absolutely imperative. And I will tell you, for perspective, from all of our departments, the total combined request for CIP, and we've, we've composed a list of priorities, is over $16 million. Despite that this year, normally we fund around $5 million. This had to be a very stark budget. So the following items, we are going to fund for the following reasons. We need to, and we're under really basically an obligation to remove an underground gasoline tank at the police department. It'll cost approximately $105,000 to do that, and Mr. Wilcox has been putting aside $30,000 a year to accomplish that this year. So $30,000 will be funded for that. The central library chimney needs to be repaired for $50,000. The Alcorn boiler needs to be replaced at a cost of $300,000. And I will just note, that is imperative because we've been, we've been spending approximately $40,000 a year to repair it because of severe leakages there. So this is something that can't wait any longer. We need to do a handicap lift at the annex pool at the cost of $10,000. Freshwater Pond, there was some news reporting on this earlier in the year about the overflow. We've had a recent inspection. We've been working closely and reached out to DEEP. We were going to do that project in three or four years from now. We've been saving money each year to do that. However, given the immediacy of it, we are funding the entire project this year, and will complete it this year at a cost of $350,000. Miscellaneous architectural and engineering, it's $110,000. This is money we need to have so that when we have projects such as we did that are unexpected, such as Orlando Drive last year, we need to go out and make emergency repairs. We have the money to have architects do the drawings and engineers figure out the plans for us. Our contribution to roads 2015 from the town budget, in addition to that, which is what we bond, is $176,000. We have included this year something that might seem like it's discretionary, but it really isn't. It's a $300,000 investment, of which we think we will be eligible for about 70% reimbursement from the state because it's at a school for a bathroom, unisex bathroom for boys and girls at the Stowe Early Learning Center. I will just give you a little recap why we think that's imperative. As we asked an extraordinary thing of all of the educators at Stowe and from Head Start when we combined those two programs at the Stowe Building. We gave them, and we promised to give them everything they needed in regard to resources and equipment to help them adjust to the absorption of 120 new students there. We increased parking significantly in the gravel area. We did parking in the front that was paved. We gave temporary air conditioning at that site. And we were converting that primarily based on Honeywell dollars that we have as credits to put a permanent system in. We installed an additional faculty bathroom, and we promised that because of the increased students, they had a real deficit of bathrooms for the children. We made the promise, due to their extraordinary efforts in bringing this and making this project a success, that we would help them in that area, and I would like to keep that promise, so we've included that bathroom. Additionally, at Stowe, because we have so many youngsters there, there are two boilers that are in dire need. They have long since expired their useful life, and we're going to make that commitment so that we don't have young children and infants without heat during the winter months at Stowe and at the Head Start Center. So those two boilers will be replaced completely at the cost of $400,000. The VRP is a vehicle replacement program. The town did a projection several years ago that we've been trying to abide by for replacing police vehicles, DPW light, medium trucks, DPW heavy trucks, buses and vans throughout our departments. We have tried to adhere to that. We did last year, but unfortunately, we'll have to defray that, and we are only funding at a total cost of $195,000, of which $43,000 will be put aside in this budget for a new ambulance chassis to keep our ambulance fleet and public safety efficient and safe for those that we transport. We did one last year and the year before, and we need to stick to that schedule for ambulances in the interest of public safety. Lastly, because of the high use and the critical nature of the services provided, we're also funding, lastly, the senior center roof at a cost of $50,000. That total this year, then, for CIP will be $2,000, $2,46,635. I think just as importantly, critically, and sadly, I wanted to include some of the projects that we will not be able to do this year and will have to be deferred. One is due to remediation concerns and abatement. Hazardville windows and window walls at that school at a cost of $2.4 million. We were going to commence a multi-phase school parking lot replacement program, and if you're a parent or a teacher and have been to these schools, you need, know and need, need to know, it's sadly needed. That's a cost of $350,000. We need to replace both, both of the turf fields at the annex and the high school at a cost of $1.2 million. The Enfield Annex Pool needs a dehumification and heating unit replacement, cost of $300,000. The annex tennis court replacement was to be $85,000. There has to be a tank removal for an underground tank at Prudence Crandall of $300,000 that will be deferred. There were two projects that council was considering, Summers Road and Moody Road, $1.6 million. We were going to do that ahead of the referendum. And a Hazardville Memorial Roof at the cost of $2 million, and that would have totaled $8,554,000. All of those projects will have to be deferred. Additionally, there were requests made from our department directors, who I would state did a very earnest and thoughtful job in their budgets to help us come in at a 0% increase. These were requested by had to remove. There was a grants manager positioned at Social Services to help us garner and get state and federal grants, which obviously would have offset the cost of us providing services. That was a $101,000 position. There was a submission by our Chief of EMS to increase by two EMTs, two EMTs in the EMS department at a cost of $139,000, with hopes of reducing overtime and also increasing call volume to area towns, thus increasing our revenues. We made the decision to not replace, and I will just state, we are very thankful to Deputy Chief Hall, who postponed his retirement, which he has earned and is long overdue after so many years of service to the town. But given the current pandemic, he agreed to stay on for the foreseeable future. But when he does retire, the police department will now proceed with three administrators, a chief, and two captains, and that will be a savings of $41,000 approximately. We will keep the number of patrol officers and the actual count of officers at 95 in some shape or form, but it would be somebody being returned to the road. We will not be continuing with our road engineer, who has been doing a fantastic job on the road 2015 project. But because, as you will see later, we're not going to be doing a 2020 referendum, that job will now expire at a cost of $118,000. There was a social services IT program, which is going to be highly efficient to help us track and be more efficient, of $60,000. And then, of course, there will be no roads referendum 2020 to complete the roads that we have been, you know, basically Scotch-taping over the last few years and repairing and doing some paving, and that would have completed the projects in town, but that will have to be deferred. And again, it says no roads, but it's no roofs referendum 2020. We had also looked at a concurrent path on roads and roofs. I mentioned previously, we're going to try to do Summers Road and Moody, and then do a referendum for the larger portion. Likewise, we were going to do Hazardville Roof in our regular budget, and then include other school and town roofs in a referendum package to get us up to speed, but that will have to be deferred to a future date. That brings us to the important fact that we will have no tax increase this year. Zero dollar increase is a zero increase. The mil rate, the FY 20 mil rate was 34.23 mils. That will be the mil rate if this budget is adopted for FY 21 of 34.23 mils. So there'll be no increase in the mil rate under my budget. And just a brief explanation of what the mil rate is. Basically, we charge $34.23 for every $1,000 of taxable value. We tax 70% of market value of a property as established by the town assessor's office. So for instance, a home in Enfield worth $200,000 would be taxed at 70% of that. And based on the mil rate of 34.23 of last year in this year, your taxes will remain at $4,792. Again, no increase for a household this year. This is a look at the historical increase of the mil rate. And most telling, and importantly, at the end, you can see 2020 was the increase of 34.23 that we remain flat for the 2021 proposed budget of 34.23. I think this chart is helpful. It tells you how we pay, what, how, how do we pay for the budget in its totality? This is the breakdown. Taxes account for the lion's share, approximately of $100 million. That's the blue portion of the pie. That comes from our town property, motor vehicle, personal property taxes. The next is $31 million for intergovernmental revenues. And again, that is money that we receive from the state and sometimes from federal funds that go directly to specific programs. Charges for services that we generate, about $1,300,000 a year. Investment income, approximately $684,000. Fines and forfeitures, and some of this is for blight and other types of fines, is $12,000 a year. Licenses and permits is approximately $637,000, and that's conveying taxes and things we receive primarily in the clerk's office. Intergovernmental funds, those are transfers within the town budget of approximately $640,000. And that is some money, for instance, that when we charge for outside services for use of our police and our police vehicles, we generated income, and that's what that represents. Also, the fund balance, and we're going to elaborate upon this shortly, the use of the fund balance this year will be $3.3 million, and that will account for the total 100% of our FY 2021 proposed budget in the amount of $138,918,000. So where does that money go? Similarly, in past years, 52% or $2,400, or $2,474 goes to education. Then you can see the breakdown. 12% to Public Works, 10% to Public Safety, that's police and EMS. Other transfers to run recreation and the senior center, other town programs, general government. And it diminishes down, diminishes down to our debt service, pensions, development services, and then some other miscellaneous. And that accounts for the use of your tax dollars. Our budget timeline will remain the same, despite the fact that the state has given some discretion and flexibility to towns to extend their budget process. We would like to conclude it and have our residents know and have stability and consistency so we can move on to addressing the other dire issues that confront us. So today, April fifteenth, I am introducing and proposing this budget to the town council. They will have deliberations where they will be able to ask questions of directors on the budget, and they will have the budget book, and we will make that available as well to the public. That will occur on April 22nd. We will have a public hearing on April 29th. Of course, it'll be different than in past years when we were able to get together and see each other and ask questions in person. The town attorney is working with Kasha, our Assistant Manager, to come up with compliance in the spirit and the letter of the governor's executive orders and to how we can best have people give public input to the budget process, and that will be announced shortly. Then on May sixth or seventh, those are tentative dates. There will be council deliberations on the budget. They can make changes, additions or deletions. And then the budget shall be adopted no later than May 20th of 2020. The budget then would become effective July 1st of 2020. So these are some highlights, and I think they are important positive highlights. Our pension, our town pensions are funded at 95%. The police pension is funded at 92.2%. Very, very high, much higher in contrast than what the state of Connecticut has done over the last several years. Our standard impores double A rating allows us to borrow money at a very low rate. Last year, we borrowed monies for the roads projects and for the WPC project, the high school and going forward for JFK at historic low interest rates, some just over 1%. The fund balance, the fund balance, as you've seen, we're using this year over 3 million from it. What is the fund balance? I think it's important to note that due to the careful stewardship of councils and over the last many decades in Enfield, we have a fund balance unassigned, which means it's money, it's a rainy day fund in the bank, as of June 30th, of $25,660,000. Now, under our rules, and I won't get into them, the fund balance has restrictions so that we will always keep in reserve and not spend or allocate a level of $12,900,000. So budget usage, which is available, which is unassigned, but is the pool apart from that, represents about $10,700,000. As we've said, last year, we used out of the unassigned fund balance approximately $2.5 million. This year, we are using 3.3 million. And again, we had greater than expected revenues last year, so we were able to utilize them. So our remaining unassigned fund balance this year, even after our investment of 3 million for the CIP that we talked about, remains at a very healthy, just shy of $7 million. So we will have $12.5 million in reserve for a rainy day fund that we will not touch, but we have available for this next year, which could be uncertain, of $7 million that we could use in emergencies, such as if the state budget, for some reason, is drastically cut, we would have that money to offset it, as we've had to do in past years. Couple of other notables, the Honeywell cost. We say cost avoidance. It basically was a savings after implementing Honeywell technologies across the town. Last year in the 2019, saved us about $849,000. There will be a new updated report this June, and we hope to realize savings again. We had received an Eversource credit. We're listing this year, we're hopeful of an FY 21, and we're pretty sure of this for the following reason, of $250,000, because in April of 2018, we received $1.6 million in rebates from Eversource, which was about $462,000 over what was anticipated. So Mr. Wilcox prudently put that money in deferred revenues, and we've been using it over the last three years and this year at the rate of about $250,000 a year, and we expect to do so this year as well. We are happy to announce that we are going to be able to restore senior center hours, additional new hours, Mondays, 5 to 8 p.m., which was requested by the users of the senior center. We were able to do that because of the smart management of the senior center and increased revenues there that will offset this increase. It will pay for itself, in other words. Again, we're going to do through, because of public safety, we will remount an ambulance chassis. And I say, over the last couple of years, we've been very careful and efficient. We haven't bought new ambulances outright, which cost, today, almost a half a million dollars. Instead, we re-chassis them at a lower cost, but it allows us for maintenance and getting many more years out of the ambulances. Lastly, as I alluded to earlier, the Stowe Early Learning Center bathroom at a cost of about $300,000, which, again, we hope we will be reimbursed by the state, and we will put in all necessary fund applications to be reimbursed, hopefully, approximately 70% of that. Now we turn to water pollution control. As you know, a few years back, this was spun off outside the general fund at the, really, insistence of DEEP and a recommendation of our consultant, Woodard and Curran. The FY 2020 adopted budget was a total of $5.4 million approximately. 4.3 million in operating, 1.1 million in capital. The proposed 2021 budget is a total of $5.8 million. That is comprised of 4.7 in operating costs and $1.1 million in capital for a total of $5.8 million approximately, and this represents on total a 6.4% increase. Where does that come from? Well, on the operating side, we have included half of a position. This Water Pollution Control Center is being upgraded. I'm going to address that in a moment, and it will be online in October. A NOVAC study indicated that we need to commit additional people for maintenance and for running the Water Pollution Control Center to protect our investment. for maintenance and for running the water pollution control center to protect our investment. It will be online in October, so we're including a half year cost of an employee there at the cost of about $42,000. Interest to date on monies that we have borrowed for the water pollution control have been about $200,000 a year. That is included. And then, again, in the operating costs, just like on the town side, there's been a $93,000 increase in health insurance costs and mandatory union pay increases of about $36,000. So that comprises the increases on the operating side. The, there is a decrease of about $70,000, as you can see, in the capital. And that really represents investment that we've made on CIP, which is pump stations and street realigning and other infrastructure that we will again do the minimum, and it will be deferred. The total cost of our upgrade to have a state of the art water pollution control center, which will be reopened hopefully, and of course, the caveat is the COVID-19 virus. It has caused inconvenience, delay, and some concern there, just as you can imagine, of workers and being present and others from contractors being unavailable, supply perhaps interruptions. But we're still on track to open in October of this year. And we're hopeful we will be able to do that. The cost of the upgrade is as follows. We have received a loan from the Clean Water Fund in the amount of $23 million at 2%. We receive a Clean Water Fund grant, and that's a grant that we receive that we don't have an obligation to repay in the amount of $5.6 million. And that is given to us as a reimbursement as we continue to pay for the improvements each month as they're made. And then we received a one-time Department of Corrections payment of $2.5 million under our memo of understanding for them to use our water pollution control center from their DOC operations. And then lastly, we have bonded and some other funding sources in the amount of 4.6 million. That's the total upgrade of $36 million. Last year, the actual adopted budget for 2020 was a base rate, which was $30 per quarter and a volumetric usage charge. And it's split depending on usage, but it's 349 and then increases to 524. On the right, I'm telling you what I'm doing this year. My recommendation, again, is no increase. It would remain flat at $30 per quarter for the base rate. And the volumetric usage charges will remain at $3.40 and 524 respectively. However, we've included the center chart, which was the recommendation by our consultant as to what we needed to increase these by on a yearly basis to make the plant sustainable. And their recommendation for this year would have been that we have a volumetric at 3.6 and 539 and also a base rate on a quarterly basis of $42 per quarter. You need to know that by remaining stable and by not making the increase, these are the implications when we reach next year's budget of 2022. This is what we know. Our proposed FY 21 rate will generate $6.9 million approximately. However, next year, the chickens come home to roost. The cost of the operating budget will be 5.8 million. However, the Clean Water Fund loan kicks in and becomes due. The Clean Water Fund loan, as I said before, is 2%. It is a 20-year loan in the amount of $23 million. Next year, we will start the repayment, and that will increase by $1.6 million a year. Second, the bonding will become due. We have a 20-year loan of approximately $4.7 million at a low interest rate. But that will commence and be effective next year. That repayment for the 20 years will start at the rate of $300,000 a year. We also continue to make a repayment to the general fund of $250,000. That is money previously because this water pollution control was unable to sustain itself. So the general fund loaned money. The total of that loan was $3.5 million. We have been paying it back on a yearly basis. And as the end of FY 2020 approaches, we will have paid back 1.9 million. But we still have the balance of 1.5 million approximately to pay. And this $250,000 will go towards it. We have also included pursuant to the NOVAC recommendation for four operator positions. As I said, we'll get into that in greater detail to keep this plant working, to keep it efficient and to make the investment in the resources of personnel so that our $36 million investment lasts us for the next 50 years. The cost of those positions would be with benefits and pay, $222,000 approximately. So our FY 2022 need will be $8,200,000. So as you can see, that will be an increase in a difference of $1,200,000 next year. So based upon that, I'm letting you know again. On the left is my proposed 2021 water pollution control rate schedule, keeping the quarterly base charge flat at $30 per quarter, the volumetric the same. If you go over to the right, and I'm going to skip ahead, you can see an option that council will have during deliberations. Because when you look at the 2022 proposed, based on the shortfall I just told to you, we will have to increase in one fell swoop, if we don't have an increase this year, the quarterly base charge to $48 per quarter, and the volumetric will go to 370 and 556. So while we would experience 0% increase this year, next year's proposed budget would have an $83 increase per household. So on the right, for council's consideration, I have included, what they could do this year is to split that. And instead of adopting my flat rate budget, they have the alternative of perhaps increasing in this year's budget the quarterly base charge to 39 and increasing volumetric to 360 and 539, and then reducing the impact in FY 2022 to then reach the $48 per quarter and the 370 and 556. That would amount to an increase per household of approximately $42 in this budget and $42 in the 2020 budget and avoid having to absorb an increase of $83 all at once. I have recognized, I have done my recommendation based on the circumstances we find ourselves, the high unemployment rates, the uncertainty of what our tax collections will be, and all other manner of things that we can't predict. So erring on the side of caution and understanding the pain and sacrifice our residents are making, that is our recommendation for this year's budget. So in conclusion, we would like to thank you for your attention. And we would just like to add on a personal note that we appreciate the sacrifice, the patience and understanding of our residents during these very difficult times, especially given the closing of some town facilities and the difficulties in providing services as we have been able to do in the past. I want you to know both at the Board of Education and on the town side, our employees strive and pride themselves on delivering the highest quality of town services in an efficient and cost-effective manner. We'll continue to do that. And we also with particularity would like to thank you for your observance of the social distancing, allowing us to keep all of our parks and fields and open spaces available to people, especially as the better weather comes. I would just say, we were experiencing a very strong economic growth period in the town of Enfield prior to this virus. And I fully expect, like the country, when this subsides, that we will have a resurgence and a very strong rebound from this in the town of Enfield that will put all of this behind us. I think that our best days are yet to come. And again, be safe, be well, and thank you for your attention this evening.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Great presentation. And also want to thank your staff, John Wilcox, Kasha Priscilla, our assistant town manager, and all your staff for putting this together. And of course, our partners on the Board of Education, the superintendent of schools, Chris Dreszek, and our partners on the Board of Education. As the town manager mentioned, the budget book will be ready approximately on Friday. That will be sent to all town councilors so they can have a copy, review it. We will have our first budget deliberation next Wednesday. We're questions, and we can start deliberating. And if the schedule, folks want to add more meetings, we can discuss that on Wednesday. And again, we're going to try to do everything over video. So again, those deliberations are open to the public, so they can see them online. Thank you very much, Chris. Appreciate it. Great job. Moving on to item three of the agenda, the discussion resolution to transfer funds for legal fees of $125,000. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfers hereby made to the town attorney of $125,000 for legal fees from unallocated charges contingency of $125,000. It's certified that the above funds are available on March 10, 2020 by John Wilcox and approved by the town manager on March 15th. Do I have a motion to approve by Councilor Muller?
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilor Spurza. And so what we'll do, allow Chris or town attorney to kind of give a brief background. And then I'll go, I'll go from left to right if we are sitting in the council chambers. Starting from, I'll ask each councillor if they have any questions or comments. So everyone gets a chance to speak. We'll go left to right, then right to left. And then if anyone wants to ask any more questions after that, yeah, just raise your hand on the thing and I'll call on you. That works for everybody. So I'll turn it over to Chris Bronson or Attorney Fowler.
I think it'd be appropriate, I'll just give you the thumbnail view of this. Basically, we are in arbitration with the police union over the collective bargaining agreement. We have retained the firm of shipment in Goodwin. It is estimated that their legal fees will be approximately $100,000. Of course, that's subject to change. It could be less, it could be more. Attorney Talberg is our town attorney. He serves at a yearly cost of $65,000, although he's mentioned in this only because the way that the budget went with Maria Elston retiring, we had an outside legal services account of $25,000 that we've used in the interim while we were short a person. That has been extinguished so that we are simply putting in $100,000 for shipment in Goodwin to have that reserve, $25,000 back into the outside legal services if it becomes necessary. But it does not in any way increase or change the yearly salary of the town attorney.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. And I will move again left to right. So I'll ask Councilor Spurza if you would like to have any questions or comments. The floor is yours.
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm all set. No questions.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Spurza. I'll move over, Councilor Riley, do you have any questions or comments, please?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving over again to the left, Councilor Mangini, do you have any questions or comments? The floor is yours.
I think the only question that I have is Chris just mentioned putting some money aside for safety sake. Chris, could you please give an indication as to how much? Because the $25,000 is for outside attorney's fees, but you've got $100,000. So is that 80 or 75,000 going to be put aside for emergency legal services?
$100,000 is specifically designated for legal fees incurred by shipment in Goodwin as they represent as in our collective bargaining arbitration with the police union. That is $100,000. It could be more, it could be less. That's the estimation from past experience. So we're putting that in so we don't have to come back every month for stipends. Then lastly, to be clear, we have an assistant town attorney in the town attorney's office, and we have a part-time town attorney. So that we are putting back $25,000, which was exhausted during collective bargaining for some other reasons, to put that money there in the event we need it going forward for. And we always come to council, the town attorney has in the past for various blight enforcement foreclosures to be able to still have that flexibility. We always come to the council to get permission, or the town attorney does. And that's what the other $25,000 represents.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Councilor Mangini, do you have any other questions? You still have the floor.
No, nope, nope.
Thank you very much. Moving over to Councilor Spurza, you have the floor, please.
Oops, I'm all set. Thanks.
You're all set, Paul. Thank you. Councilor Kiner, you have the floor.
I'm all set, thank you.
You're all set?
Yep, thank you.
Now we're going right, right to left. Thank you, sir. Councilor Bosco, you have the floor. Do you have any questions or comments?
I'm all set.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Hemler, do you have any questions or comments? You have the floor.
No, I don't. I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Councilor Ungar, do you have any questions or concerns? You have the floor.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Muller, you have the floor. Do you have any questions or comments?
All set, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Suzak, you have the floor. Do you have any questions or comments?
All set. Thank you.
Since now it's back to me. Chris, quick question. Do we have any idea on timing? I know with everything going on, has arbitration been delayed till summer or fall? Do we have any idea?
We could get an update from the HR Director, Mr. Belinda. I know they had had some preliminary meetings. But beyond that, given the current circumstances, I can get an estimate from our attorneys as to what the scheduling going forward will be. I'm sure they're not having any more meetings down at the labor board. So we'll try to get an update, sir.
No problem. I appreciate that. So I want, so anyone else, I'm looking at the participant, anyone else like have any questions or comments? So floor is open to all councilors. Going once, I see no hands being raised electronically. Sorry, folks, I'm looking electronically. Going twice. Okay, I declare public communications closed. I wish I had my gavel right here and hit the table. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call, Suzanne, please.
Councilor Bosco.
Four.
Councilor Spurza.
Four.
Councilor Hemler.
Four.
Councilor Kiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Muller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilors Spurza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Councilor Ungar.
Four.
Here's eleven in favor and not against, no abstention.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item four on the agenda, request to transfer funds for the community gardens of $35,000. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, calling transfer is hereby made to the community, to community development, other supplies, materials of $35,000 from unallocated charges contingency of $35,000. Certified that the above stated funds are available as of April 13, 2020 by John Wilcox, the Director of Finance, and approved by our town manager, Christopher Bronson, on April 14th. So move by Councilor Muller. And do I have a second? Second by Councilor Spurza. And so before, again, I follow the same process. Chris, any comments or?
Yes, briefly, I think it's important to note that this is an exciting new initiative, something old and something new. Several years ago, we received a grant to install 30 garden plots off Main Street in the Thompsonville section of town. In fact, we actually showed that to the governor when he came on his tour. It has been highly successful. We have each year a waiting list. So actually, prior to even this virus, we had thought about expanding that. So we looked for additional sites. We determined that there were two sites that would be appropriate. One is at Central Library on Middle Road, the other on Two Chapel Street in downtown Thompsonville. And it would account for an additional 60 new garden beds. Now, we had had some fundraising going on, and we've talked to some different groups about donating. But we thought, in the interest of having this up and running for the June planting season, we were going directly to council. We found the funding existing. It would cost $35,000. That would represent 60 new beds to build the gardens, to install fencing, to do sheds, soils, hoses, landscaping, grading, soup to nuts there. And we would have it up and running so our citizens would have something to look forward to and get some new farmers out when the weather gets better. I would just tell you, this is going to be part of a larger project where we'd like to do these all over town. We'd like to encourage people who live in condos or apartments or even perhaps homes that don't have an area to engage in this with us. It's exciting. We charge $25 a plot, and that represents the actual use of the plot. We give them soil, organic plants, and we have tutorials from the person that we've hired from outside who's done it for several years that will give them tutorials and help them with the planting and answer any questions as the season progresses. It's been a very successful program. I'm excited that we would be able to expand it. And anybody, if the council proceeds to approve this, would ask that they call Development Services, Lori Wittens' office, talk to her assistant Cheryl to get on the waiting list. I'm hoping that we can have a target in the future and maybe do 500 of these garden plots and get people back to work in the soil. I think with what's going on today, I think people are much more appreciative about the outdoors, about what's going on in nature. And I think they, I think it would do us all good to get our hands a little dirty in the soil.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. So now move again left to right. Councilor Spurza, you have the floor.
No, I would just say that I think it's a wonderful program, especially what we've been dealing with. And I just need clarification, the $25 is not per month. And I just need clarification, the twenty-five dollars is not per month, it's for the entire season, correct?
That is correct councillor.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, I think it's a great program, and I hope we pass this.
Thank you councillor Sprazza, you still have the floor, you have any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Thank you, sir, moving on to, again, to the left, councillor Riley, you have the floor.
Thanks, I do have a question about the fencing at the library. Is it going to be like the fencing that's around the one that's already on the way to the boat launch? And will it be locked? Because I'm just thinking about all the kids that go to the playground that's there, because I don't know where on the property you're going to put it. So I just worry about kids going in there and, I don't know.
No, what we did, thank you councillor, very good question, it'll be aesthetically appropriate for the area. This is going to be directly adjacent to the building, we had that concern not to put a back where we wouldn't be able to monitor it. This would be right next to the building, that's why there are fewer plots there, there will be ten. And the fencing really is to separate the gardeners from the parking lot. We had some really great renderings that we did that we would have showed at the council meeting, but we weren't able to do it, you know, under this format, but that's where it'll be, and it'll be close to the building, so we don't have to worry about that interchange between the playscape and the gardeners.
Awesome, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
You're welcome.
Thank you, moving on to the left again, councillor Mangini, you have the floor, if you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I just wanted to comment, I think this is an excellent program, especially now with all the you know negativity and all the stress and all the concern with the pandemic, I think this is very appropriate. And I just hope everyone has a greener thumb than I have, because I got my garden coming too, and I think it's great for people to engage in this, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Councillor Sakala, you have the floor.
No questions, great program, I'll support it.
Thank you, councillor Kiner, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, this will be money really well spent, glad we're doing it, thank you.
Thank you, sir, again, now moving right to left, councillor Bosco, you have the floor.
Well, I think this is a great thing. The only question I have is how do people sign up, is there going to be a lottery? Or, because I'm sure there's going to be more people than we have spots to try to go to these.
As I had stated, we're going to, it's first come, first served at this time. And they, people have to only call Lori Witness' office at Development Services and talk to her assistant Cheryl. And it'll be first come, first served, Joey, that's how we've done it in the past. And hopefully, as we have increased demand, we'll have increased plots, in the future, we'll be able to accommodate everybody.
Councillor Bosco, you still have the floor?
Thank you, all set.
All set. Councillor Hemler, you have the floor.
I am definitely in favor of it, I think it's a healthy, good activity, I have a garden myself, so I definitely know the benefits. And I'm just glad to see so much support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ungar, you have the floor.
Oh yeah, it sounds like a wonderful program, I just had two quick questions, what is the size of each lot, and are people allowed to purchase more than one?
Well, I can only, yeah, I can only tell you from a visual, Akasha is on, maybe she knows.
Just approximate. Like an eight by ten area, six by four?
Akasha, do you have those dimensions, I know from a visual, having looked into them, there were nice plots that's workable, not too large, but I don't know the exact dimensions, do you Akasha, otherwise?
I don't know that, I don't know the exact dimensions, unfortunately, I'm not sure.
All right, and in the second, I believe we would be, it'd be one plot, you know, per resident at this juncture, I think that's what's done in the past, we really, it wouldn't be fair if somebody monopolized them, I don't think. Having said that, in the past, I don't know what the policy was, I think with the new beds, council that we would want to limit it to one, so we would have, you know, more people being able to avail themselves of this opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, all set councillor Ungar? Councillor Muller, you have the floor. Yes, thank you, definitely a great program, and I'll be supporting this, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, Deputy Mayor Suzak, you have the floor.
Now, is this in conjunction with the Sustainable CT?
Deputy Mayor, Akasha can address that, yes, it had been, and we had matching funds, but due to the COVID-19, there was a big drop-off, so we felt that we wanted to move forward and fund it entirely, all of that still is up, we still will be seeking funding, as I indicated, because we want to expand the program even further, Akasha, would you like to comment?
From my understanding, the Sustainable CT matching fund, the IOBY page, that required ten different donors. So unfortunately, that actually expires at the end of the month, and we've only have, I believe, four donors on there for a total of four hundred dollars right now, so that's partially why, you know, we really want this to go forward, and we, we need to have the funding secure to be able to pursue this project, have it starting June. Okay, so as we expand, if we can get ten donors and get some advertising on that, then we would qualify for grants from Sustainable CT? That is my understanding, yes. Okay, so I guess that's, you know, it's always good to advertise, I didn't know that we were looking for donors, so sometimes we, we've got to get the word out there, and I think at the library, it'll be well received, so I will support this.
All set, or you still have more questions? All right, thank you Deputy Mayor Suzak, Chris, or Akasha, I have three, two quick comments and a question. You know, Chris, Chris, I know this is, to your point, part of our, our larger plan, where hopefully maybe we tie this to at some point with the farmers market, you know, maybe it's some good news when we finally pull out of this in the summer.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the question, that is correct. Even before this pandemic, we had had discussions in the fall, we wanted to reinvigorate the farmers market, we got a new person on board who's well-known to the community, who does a fantastic job in these matters. Connie Prevent, I'm going to say that because her enthusiasm is known by all that meet her. And she's been doing a bang-up job of attracting and soliciting new people for the farmers market. We're going to move it from Wednesday evenings to the weekend, probably on Sundays, because prior to this, a lot of our local farmers were committed to other markets in other towns on Saturdays. So we were going to try it on Sunday, although we're hopeful, the governor has listed this as an essential service, if you will, and other communities are canceling theirs. We're going to have optimism, we're going to keep our fingers crossed, we're going to move full speed ahead. And it will be later in July, and then, you know, into August and September, we expect a really exciting grand opening, we're going to promote it. And one of our tie-ins to the gardens, Mr. Mayor, is that we want to encourage people to raise what they can for their families, and if they have something extra, come on down, we'll have a communal area at our farmers market, and they can hawk their wares there. So we're very, very excited about it, again, we had a great visual, a new flyer about the market, we'll be promoting that and really, you know, bringing it forth over the next couple of months. We're hopeful all of this will be in our past, and we'll have a good, with the cancellation of other, you know, venerable events that we all have come to know and love, that perhaps this can replace it, we can focus on it and build on it and do some other exciting things at the grand opening of the farmers market. So yes, they are, they are tied together.
Very, very, very great, thank you for the explanation. And along, along the lines of councillor Bosco's question, so can someone call tomorrow if they wanted to, when, when can someone call the?
Yes, they can do it immediately, if you approve the resolution, which we're hopeful, it sounds like you're going to, they can start calling tomorrow, and we'll have that number up, but it is for Development Services. And what I'll do while I am speaking, Akasha can look up the number, and then before the end of the meeting, she can give the number out to Development Services. If she's so kind.
I will, I will do that, and Lori went in, just send me a text message that the size of the garden beds are four by eight.
Wonderful.
And just keeping back from my, I got to ask my resident, you know, through this, you know, through the crisis, the pandemic, maybe at some point, doesn't have to be with these garden beds, but maybe we dedicate at some point a little corner of one of them for honoring the people, you know, who have done, you know, who, who have gotten sick, who unfortunately may have passed on through the pandemic, that's something we can consider as part of maybe a future garden bed, which I thought was a great idea.
It is, Mr. Mayor, and we will consider it, and we will come up with a proposal for that going forward, thank you.
Thank you very much, now, anyone, I'm going to look at my participants again, for anyone who want to raise their hand, any other questions from councillors? Want to make sure I give everyone a chance? Going once? Going twice, any other comments, Chris, from staff or? Hearing none? Suzanne, roll call, please.
Councillor Bosco.
Four.
Councillor Sakala.
Four.
Councillor Hemler.
Four.
Councillor Kiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councillor Mangini.
Four.
Councillor Muller.
Four.
Councillor Riley.
Four.
Councillors Frazza.
Four.
Four.
And councillor Ungar.
Four.
Here's eleven in favor and against, no abstentions.
Thank you Suzanne. Moving on to item five, discussing resolution authorizing social services to establish establish a revenue account to utilize funds for the procurement of meals to seniors during COVID-19. Whereas the Connecticut Renewal Team, also known as CRT, operates the Meals on Wheels program out of the town of Enfield Senior Center and delivers meals to approximately sixty-three residents. Whereas CRT also provides forty meals to Mark Twain residents and nine meals to Enfield residents through the town of Enfield Congregate Living Division of Social Services. Whereas the town, Enfield Town Council, the town manager's office, have received requests from citizens and businesses to establish a fund to be used to continue these meals should the CRT be unable to provide them. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council authorizes the town manager's office to establish the revenue account two-two-zero-four-six-one-three-nine-dash-four-one-seven-zero-five-zero for the COVID-19 relief fund. Be it further resolved, any donations received for the COVID-19 relief account be appropriated for expenditure on meals to replace any that the CRT may be unable to provide. And that any funds not expended at the end of each fiscal year be re-appropriated in the following fiscal year until such, till such funds are exhausted. Be it further resolved, any donations that are not needed to replace meals provided by the CRT may be used to provide other assistance to residents harmed by the COVID-19 pandemic. Be it further resolved that any funds not spent on COVID-19 relief after eighteen months shall, may be used to offset expenses for the Neighborhood Services Division of Social Services presented by the town manager's office on April sixth, two thousand twenty. So moved. By councillor Sakala, second by councillor Muller.
Second.
Sorry if I got, I heard three, so I had councillor Sakala and councillor Muller. You know, Chris, this is, I mean, this is a great, this is a great idea.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to interject, Mr. Mitch, I would love to take credit for it, I cannot. We received a call from a resident who wishes to remain anonymous, who had been receiving calls from residents who would like to make donations during this time of need, so we, our part of it was to rack our brains to say, where do we think donations to the town could make the most good? Or do the most good? And under our rules, if you give money to the town, it goes to the general fund. So in regard to the K-9 program, we set up an account, council has to authorize it. Also, friends of the library, friends of the senior center, so we establish by resolution, such as we're doing here, the authority to send and give donations to a specific cause. So we came up with the senior meals, because as you know, earlier in the season, CRT had announced that they are cutting back on meals, we made other provisions to continue to provide meals right now. Volunteers deliver meals approximately to sixty-three residents currently. Nine meals to the congregate, well, I guess nine congregate meals to the senior center, and another sixty-three residents as well, forty meals to Mark Twain. So we were, we were concerned that perhaps that funding would dry up or be reduced. So we thought this would be a wonderful place for people, if they wanted to donate, they would know that the money is going to seniors and to provide them with meals, especially during this time, when food is of such a concern to so many people, especially the elderly. And then we did a proviso, John Wilcox indicated that if, of course, that money was put there and they didn't curtail the CRT funding or reduce it, we would then designate that it would go to any COVID-related expenses incurred, and we would use them to offset any costs in the neighborhood services, so that would be akin to the, I think, the same purpose. So I think it's a wonderful idea, and we endorse it.
Thank you, sir. Moving on again, left to right, councillor Sprazza, you have the floor.
No, I think this is a great program, and like the manager said, years ago at the police department, people donated money for our K-9 program. They wanted to make sure the money went where it was intended, we did the same thing. And I think if our residents are going to be benevolent and generous enough to feed our seniors, the money should go where they want it to go, so I think it's a great program, and I'll be supporting this.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, councillor Riley, do you have, you have the floor, do you have any questions or comments?
I just want to say, I think that this is a great idea. I am humbled by the outpouring that our community has towards all of our residents and neighbors, and I think this just showcases that, you know, Enfield cares about their neighbors, so I think it's great, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Mangini, you have the floor.
I, I do have a couple of questions to our town manager, do we have any indication at this time when CRT will have issues delivering to our residents? Chris, do you have?
Yes, they, they already had cut back, and in some, our town included, it was the focus of a JI article that we discussed at a council meeting a couple of months ago. So they already have, you know, cut back, so our concern was, in this area, if they were to cut back or stop completely, this would be a reserve fund that we could use to augment municipal funds to provide those meals without interruption.
Okay, excuse me, the other question I have, the second paragraph to the last, be it further resolved, what other assistance are we thinking about to, to the residents that may be harmed by this?
Well, you know, we're really not, we needed to catch all, Mr. Wilcox didn't want us to have to come back to council and or return the money to people if they donated it, so we thought upfront, we would say we would do to other COVID-related expenses of neighborhood services, and we could articulate those if that eventuality occurs, but at this juncture, we didn't have any foresight specifically as to what they would be, only they would be related to COVID-19 services and expenses incurred by neighborhood services.
And then the final question I have is, do we have an idea of how much money you want to put into this fund?
Well, I guess it will depend on the people of the town, and when they find out about it, I, I know, as Charlotte said, we have a very generous population, we have a very caring town, so I think when word spreads and people know it's going to be designated to the elderly and their meals or to neighborhood services, I think there will be, I'm not going to say an outpouring, but I think there will be a, a healthy endowment, if you will, and we'll keep you posted as to what that is.
Okay, and again, I certainly do support this resolution, and I, and I think it's, you know, definitely, you know, important at this point that we be there for our residents, thank you again.
Thank you councillor Mangini, councillor Sakala, you have the floor, please.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kiner, you have the floor, please.
You know, this is what caring communities do, and I'm so proud of our town, and so proud of our residents for doing this, so it's a great program. And Chris, thank you for putting this before us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kiner.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, right to left, councillor Bosco, you have the floor.
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you, sir, councillor Hemler, you have the floor.
Okay, well, I'm definitely in favor of it, but I have two questions, how does someone donate? And can donations be made online?
Well, I'll take the latter question first, we'll try to accommodate that as we have with other payments, and I'll endorse that to John Wilcox, and then the first will be, I, I think that it'll be designated, we'll come out with it, we'll put it on a website with the exact specification, if you're going to write a check, how you do it, or, you know, those type of things, and Mr. Wilcox from Finance can work with us to put that out there, starting tomorrow, if you pass this.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, very good questions.
Thank you councillor Hemler, moving on to councillor Ungar, you have the floor.
I think this sounds like a great idea, this and the gardening, it's nice to hear some positive things going on. I'm wondering if somehow we can get a status report, please, they're going.
So Chris, I think the question will correct councillor Ungar?
I'm sorry, you bleeped out.
Yeah, you, you asked your question again, please.
Okay. I said, this sounds like a great idea, and I'm glad to hear some positive things that are happening. Is it possible to get a status as to how it's being received from the? from the residents, and, and how the donations are progressing?
Absolutely, as we receive them, we'll try to do it, uh, at each council meeting and give an update.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Muller, you have the floor.
All set, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council, Deputy Mayor Suzak, you have the floor.
All set, thank you, great idea.
And Chris, again, I, I think it's a great idea, I just a suggestion, if we're lucky enough to get donations and we're, we're providing meals, could we possibly try to purchase them from local restaurants who could use all the help they could get at this point? Just a suggestion, if possible.
We'll, we'll certainly, if it becomes our prerogative to be making the choice to purchase the meals, we'll certainly strive to accomplish that, yes.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. Again, I'll open up, does anyone, uh, to the entire council, anyone have a question or comment they didn't have a chance to say prior? Going once? Going twice, Chris or Akasha, anything else, if you are, you guys all set?
We're all set, I'm all set, Akasha?
Okay, Suzanne, roll call, please.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Counselor Kiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Councilors Faraza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Ungar.
Four.
Here's eleven in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you Suzanne, again, I wanna thank all the councilors for being very flexible and getting up the video conferencing, and I also wanna thank Deb, our McCarthy, who's done a great job, and Paul, Paul Allen, again, great job, I think this worked pretty well, um, we will have, uh, again, we will meet next Wednesday, we'll have a posting, and thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just add to that, and I thank you for those remarks, you, you have incredible employees in the town of Enfield, I would just like to thank the man behind the camera, the man behind the scenes who also was integral in doing this with his savvy and wizardry, Alex, uh, Kiner, who is with our E T V, who put all this together, who had a splice together, the prepared, recorded, plus the live, and Paul Russell, I, you don't know how important it was that many, many weeks ago, uh, that we talked about what might happen, and he endeavored to get the Windstream, uh, app application, ahead of everybody else, we started testing it, which has enabled us not only with our department directors, but with our teams of employees meeting every week, plus the council, to be able to continue operations, and again, as you, as you said lastly, Deb McCarthy for reaching out to the council to help you install the application and learn how to use it, so that we would be able to do this meeting tonight, I thank everybody, uh, including the council for all of their hard work and dedication to the town of Enfield.
And for the record, Paul, I apologize, it's Paul Russell, I don't know why I keep calling Paul Allen, so I apologize for it. Make sure I get that in public, so I apologize on me.
That's okay, Mike, I'll take that compliment anytime.
Well, folks, thank you all again, everyone stay safe, stay well, and it's good to get back into doing some stuff, you know, that is policy-related, and, um, hopefully we can continue to move forward and build on this, and we'll look forward to seeing everyone really soon, have a great night, we have a motion to adjourn. By Counselor Muller, second.
Second. Second.
All those in favor, by a show of hands, aye?
Aye.
Aye, we have a motion to adjourn, thank you everyone, have a great night, everyone, stay safe.
Thank you, stay safe, bye.